All right, it's 1:30. Let's bring this meeting to order. And if you would, stand with me, please. Let's have a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, first of all, we ask now for your calming presence at this time, that you would guide us through this meeting, give everyone an opportunity to voice their concerns. May we reach conclusions, Lord, in a spirit of cooperation. Lord, we can't do this without you. We just turn this meeting over to you. We ask your blessing on all of our firefighters, all of our first responders. First and foremost, keep them safe regardless of what the situation is, Lord. We ask that they be able to return to work each and every day. Help us to make a decision that is best for the citizens of the county, best for the citizens of the city. But we're all part of Titus County, Lord, and we just ask that you would enable us to always reach conclusions and decisions that are in the best interest of all. We ask it in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, good afternoon. Thank you for coming to a 1:30 special meeting here on a Monday. This is the 17th of October, 2022. We're back once again for yet another discussion on fire protection in both the city and the county. This is not just about the county. It's about the city. It's about folks that live in the city, folks that live in the county. One thing for certain is, again, we're all Titus County residents, and we approach this issue of fire protection from different perspectives. Everyone in here has a different perspective on this. But I'll try to be as unbiased as I can in making some opening comments. But we're pleased to have lots of firefighters here, lots of firefighter support staff, interested citizens, members of our city council, just interested citizens. You're always welcome up here, and I appreciate the fact that you've taken time out of your day to come. Not everyone was able to attend this meeting, and so we're grateful to be able to maybe have some coverage here from Tri-County Press. And if you're just coming in, help yourself. Hopefully, you can find a seat. In case there's any of you that aren't really aware of what's being discussed today, or maybe have gotten, you know, information from one source and would like to have a better overall general description, I've tried to put together some, again, unbiased notes here, just to kind of get the conversation started. But as most of you know, the county currently contracts with the city for fire protection services. The county has volunteer firefighters, volunteer fire departments, but we also rely on as a backup and oftentimes as a primary provider of fire protection in the event that our volunteers are, for whatever reason, unable to attend an emergency event. Right now, we currently spend about $1 million a year as payment to the city for those services. We are at the end of a 12-year contract. We're actually one month past that. We had originally a 10-year contract. It was extended two different times for one year at a time, and so we are at the end of that 12 years of an agreement with the city. Some of the things that are different since 12 years ago, we have, unfortunately, fewer volunteer firefighters. A lot of our senior members have retired and moved on, and we have not been able to replace as many as we have lost. And we've had this discussion from time to time. It's not a negative statement about any volunteer fire department. This is not just a Mount Pleasant or Titus County problem. It's a worldwide situation, just different times and different generation. As best we can tell, the city fire department calls are approximately 60% county-related and about 40% city-related. So 60% of the calls that the city makes are for county-related matters or are out in the county, and we've gotten data from Chief McCray that supports that. In negotiating a new fire protection contract between the city and the county, there has been a fire protection committee that was put together several months ago, and we have been working on a contract to hopefully reach an agreement as to how we'll handle fire protection in the coming years. And five years is what we determined would be a good timeframe to work with. And at least the most recent version of that document, the county would pay about, would pay 40% of the city's budget. That city fire protection budget, or what the city pays for all of their fire department needs, that includes everything, including primarily payroll, is about 3.7 million in the current budget. So if you were to assume a 10% annual increase in the city's budget, now, maybe that's high, maybe that's low, but that's just a number that I picked. If you were to assume that that city fire protection budget would go up 10% in each of these coming years, the county would end up spending in that year five about $2.2 million to the city. That's a far cry from where we are right now at $1 million. Now, why is it going up so fast, so much, so quickly? My personal opinion, I think that we've gotten a pretty good bargain here in recent years. Fire protection is only going up. Wages are going up. Of course, inflation has contributed to that. But we've been getting a heck of a deal from the city, who provides always more equipment and more manpower. Every time they make a call within the county, they provide more than they're obligated to. So, again, you think about those numbers. Here we are at $1 million, and in five years, we're going to be looking at possibly over $2 million. That's a real concern for those of us in the county. And when I say us, I'm talking about the five fellows you see sitting up here. That dramatic increase would contribute, as you can imagine, to the erosion of our surplus. We have about an $8 million surplus at the county. That's great. That's good news, and that's a blessing for Titus County when many counties can't say that they've got anywhere close to that much in reserve. In fact, it's probably, at any other time, too much surplus to be holding on to. You might say we should release some of that back into the hands of the taxpayers. And for the last few years, we have been running a deficit budget, meaning we have projected more expenses than revenue, knowing that we should probably be bringing down that fund balance somewhat. Where do we end up? Probably a comfortable figure, somewhere around $4 million. The Texas State Legislature, in the last couple of years, has put limits on how much a county can raise its taxes in any given year. It used to be an 8% increase was the cap. Now it's 3.5%. And that makes it a lot more, well, let's just say, it's more difficult to budget when you know you're limited as far as how much you can raise taxes without the possibility of taxpayers saying, no, we're not going to allow you to do that. You can attempt to raise more than that 3.5%, but the voters have the right to say, no, we're not going to allow that. That's the voter approval rate, we call it, the amount that you can go to without asking or without having to ask for voter approval. I want to talk about the positive relationship that we've got with the city. We've got an excellent relationship with the city in all aspects, and certainly in fire protection. Yes, that's been put to the test here of late. But from my perspective, the primary positives about our relationship with the city as it relates to fire protection, the city of Mount Pleasant has excellent leadership. They have an incredible depth of experience. They have top-notch equipment, and they've got lots of it, and they've got two fire stations. The increase in the county contribution will enable them to hire more firefighters. The city is growing. The county is growing, and so that we don't run into a real problem when there are overlapping incidents, and that's a situation where we have an emergency call in both the city and in the county, or two in the city, or two in the county, whatever the case may be. But when you have a situation where the demand is greater than the staff that you have at any given time. And if we are willing to increase the amount of monies that we pay to the city, then that will enable them to have more firefighters and be better able to deal with those overlapping incidents when they come about. And lastly, the primary positive in our relationship with the city, as I said before, they're currently our primary source of emergency fire department services. They are there for us, and they show up every single time unless the incident is so small that our volunteers can say, you know, we've got this, we don't need you, but that doesn't happen very often. They are the ones that are primarily there every single time. Sometimes they're the only ones that show up because, again, in that particular time of day or week, we don't have any volunteer firefighters available. And so we're 100% reliant upon the city. So I'm going to call them our primary source of fire protection within the county. Now, opponents of entering into this expensive, and I'll use that term, but it's a relative term, depends upon what you think expensive is, but when you're going from $1 million a year to possibly $2.2 million over a five-year period, that's expensive to me, and it certainly is in relationship to the county's budget and to the city's budget. But opponents of entering into this five-year contract with those financial attributes are, one, the county can't afford the high cost of city-provided fire protection. Maybe it's just time to say it's gotten too expensive with the limitations that we have within the county to provide this level of fire protection, and we can't do it any longer. Opponents also say that the Sulfur Springs or the Hopkins County Fire Department works well, and we ought to be able to copy that and spend less money doing it. Opponents say that we can maintain control of our own budget, and we don't want to be subject to unknown city increases. And that's not an implication that the city is not prudent with their funds. It's just simply that we are somewhat beholden to the city. If we say, you're our primary provider, and we're going to pay a percentage of your budget, we're not going to tell you how to budget. We're going to trust that you're going to budget prudently, but we want more control over our budget that we pay for fire protection. Supporters of this contract say that the cost of a county fire department won't be as cheap as we think it is. The startup cost will be significant and really need to be more carefully considered when you talk about the first year or two of a new department. You've got costs like building of a fire station, buying an engine, brush trucks, hiring a chief, hiring his staff, you know, buying all the gear that needs to go with a brand-new department. Supporters say that we can only afford a fraction of the manpower that's afforded by the city. The city has a lot more people than we could ever dream of hiring as a county fire department. Now, granted, we don't need all the people that the city's got. They're there to take care of the city as well. And so we can scale that back significantly and not have to pay that high manpower cost. Supporters say that it will take a long time to establish a solid fire department. How long will it take? Months? Years? I don't know. It's easy to look at Hopkins County and admire what they've got, but they've been at it for quite a while. And then lastly, supporters say that the cost to run a county department and a city department, in other words, two separate departments, when you add the two together, will far exceed what we would spend in a joint contract where we share services, or basically, we hire services of the county, of the city, excuse me. That's what I got for starters. The last time that we met, back on, I think it was September 21, we took a vote, and that vote was basically to approve entering into the financial components of the version of the contract at that time, and that's what I just went over with you. We would pay 32% of their budget in year one. The next year would go to 34, then 36, then 38, and then top out at 40% in year five. And it would be based on a percentage of their budget. Now, there are certain other little items that are in there, some definitions that are included in that contract, and talking about, you know, what would be the responsibilities. But all along, the rubbing points in this have been the financial aspects of it and how much it's going to cost the county. But nonetheless, we agreed in principle, on a three-to-two vote, to go along with those financial components of that contract. But we also agreed to submit that contract for review with our county attorney, John Coburn, who's with us today, and submit that same contract to a attorney of Mr. Coburn's choosing, or of the court's choosing, but we relied upon his judgment, somebody that was familiar with interlocal contracts. And the person that Mr. Coburn chose, I happen to know because I worked with him in one of the other entities, the Northeast Texas Rural Rail Transportation District. So I'm well familiar with Ron Stoots. Ron's a very good attorney. I have utmost respect for him, and so I thought he would be a good choice for us. And so, again, as it stands right now, we had agreed in principle to continue the contract with the city, but there was that caveat. We wanted our attorneys to be able to look this over and let us know, is this something good we should enter into, or is there something that we're missing here? So I think before we do anything, before we take another vote on anything, we've got to either, we need to listen to what our attorneys have to say here, give the summary on that, and then it will require either a rescindment of that particular vote that we took back on the 21st, or we'll ratify that. So Mr. Coburn is here with us today, and I've asked him to give his comments, and I think that he can speak for Mr. Stoots and give you his comments as well. So, Mr. Coburn, I'm going to turn it over to you for a moment.
Can you hear me okay?
Pull it up a little bit more, and not that we can't hear you, but the folks that are going to listen to a YouTube channel.
Sure, Judge. So this vote, 3-2 vote occurred on the 21st. I was attending, I attended that meeting. And if everyone recalls, the next day or within about 48 hours, our county auditor prepared a written explanation of her concerns. Those concerns was, I think, maybe a worst-case scenario, we could say that was a worst-case scenario, but a possible scenario that really puts the county in a poor financial condition very quickly.
Do you want me to read her concerns here?
Yeah, that hurts to go ahead and let people know what we're talking about.
Okay. This is from Barbara Sherbit, our county attorney. She had four concerns. This proposed contract does not state a maximum annual dollar amount payable to the city of Mount Pleasant. Instead, the proposed contract requires that Titus County pays a percentage of the city's fire department budget each year with increasing percentages and no limit on the amount of annual increase. Titus County commissioners proposed a 5% maximum annual increase, but that was refused by the council. Item number two, this proposed contract does not allow for confirmation by an external independent auditor of any amounts possibly due to the city of Mount Pleasant. I think we took care of that in that contract in a later revision, but that was one of her initial reservations. Item number three, this proposed contract does not allow for termination until after September 30, 2027, except in the instance of default. In other words, there wasn't the ability for the county to say, we can't handle these expenses anymore. We've got to bow out with a one-year notice. And then lastly, her concern, of course, this was before we brought this to our council. Item number four, the proposed contract has not been evaluated by legal counsel of Titus County. City of Mount Pleasant purchased the services of an external attorney who also participated in the drafting of the proposed contract on behalf of the city. Well, that was taken care of in the vote. This was actually drafted a day before, the day before we took that vote. So a couple of those items, we still have as sticking points. A couple of them, we resolved.
In addition to that letter, I asked her in the meeting to put together some numbers for us that, I mean, that's actually what I was referring to, is the spreadsheets you put together. And the spreadsheet is the document where I said, where it paints a bleak, potentially bleak scenario for the county, if those budget numbers the city uses are actually utilized and we're forced to pay them. And so, based on that, that was a concern for, I think, all the commissioners. So I first off reached out to Mr. John Bouffey. He's an attorney who I have a lot of respect for, who we have used in the past. The county's actually contracted with him in the past. He's been a great resource. And he looked over this contract, and he came up with the same things that Barbara and I, that letter that you were referencing, Barbara and I had talked about previously. He also had the same concerns in that, you know, you've got this, you've got this contract in which we don't know, we don't know what the numbers are. As you said earlier, rightfully so, that we have to trust the city to do the right thing. Well, the city doesn't necessarily know what our needs and our obligations are. They got to look at what's in their best interest. And so that creates a problem for us, and in that we're obligated to pay them some unknown amount. So that was a concern he had. In addition to that, there's no ability for us to terminate the contract. And so Mr. Stoots told me he had also the same concerns, and he felt that it was a reasonable, a reasonable request for the county to have the 12-month ability to terminate the contract within 12 months. And he went on to say, and I didn't think about this, and I thought it was a good point, that this whole contract the city's asking us to prepare to obligate ourselves to is unconstitutional to begin with because the city is stripping us of the ability to contract, of the commissioners' court's ability to budget. Because we lose that budget ability by giving, by agreeing to pay them some percentage of some amount, whatever they think is appropriate. And it might not even be constitutional for us to enter into such a contract. I didn't think about that, but that's a, that's a good point. The commissioners' court sets the budget, you know, not the city of Mount Pleasant. And basically, we're contracting out that ability to the city, the city council will do so. So that was their concerns. So we're back to the same position we were in back on the 21st, in that, you know, my understanding is the city is not willing to give us a ability to terminate the contract at any notice. They're not willing to do that. And they also may be willing to set some, set dollar amount, but it's basically whatever the percentage of, I believe that's what you were saying, that they may agree to do that, but it's going to be whatever the percentage is that could get us in this budget. So that's basically what was reported to me and reported to you.
Okay. And just so that we don't accuse the city of taking advantage of us, the reason that they did not want to give a cancellation clause is, in taking over these responsibilities for the county and in building up their staff to be able to meet the needs of both the city and the county, taking into consideration city and county growth, taking into consideration the increasing number of overlapping incidents, taking into consideration reduction in manpower available through the volunteer fire departments, they were going to begin a planned strategy of increasing their staff. And every time you add a staff person, a firefighter, you increase substantially the costs that go along with that. That means payroll costs and benefits, and that means bunker gear, and that means additional rolling stock, and on and on. And if they're going to embark on a planned increase to be able to adequately meet their obligations as it relates to providing services for the county, they didn't want to be found in a situation where X number of years into this contract, we say, ah, we're done, we want out, and here they've built up over a period of time and then are being asked to, sorry, we're pulling out of this contract. And one year was not enough notice, and so that's their feelings on that.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I understand where they're coming from. I mean, if we, if we enter into a contract where we can terminate it in a year, it's going to affect their building plan long-term, which I understand they wanted to plan long-term. However, if we have to burn through our reserves to the point that we have to lose our bond rating as a result, that impedes our ability to make the plans long-term. And so I don't think the county taxpayers are going to be real happy if we burn through our reserves to drop below the bond thresholds and our bond rating reduces as a result. That's, that's a serious issue. And the auditor, I mean, I rely on her. She's our financial advisor, and she's got these concerns, and they're not, they're well-founded. It's not, it's not like she's out of left field with this stuff. It's, they're reasonable concerns. And that's why these, both of these attorneys felt that a ability to terminate the contract in the event that we see this crisis approaching, we can give them a year's notice, and we can, we can exit out and be able to take care of our financial issues that we have.
You know, one word I would like to state, and again, I wish Barbara's here, but unfortunately, she did have a meeting. She's not able to be here. I believe Barbara's given us the worst-case scenario here in this assumption. She's using the fact that we have budgeted, had a deficit budget this year, and is repeating that same deficit budget scenario in each of those five years, when in reality, we don't typically end up with a deficit at the end of the year. In fact, our fund balance has been steadily growing year after year. It's typically our standard procedure to overestimate our expenses and underestimate our revenues, and so even though we may budget for a deficit, that's not where we've been ending up. Now, how long will that blessing continue? I don't know. But I do want to state that we don't make it a habit to year after year budget with a deficit with the intention of ending up there. And so, again, I think this is presented as a worst case. I think you always need to know what your worst-case scenario is. I just want folks in this room to understand, we're not just, we've not just gone crazy with our budget.
And I agree. Barbara would, if she was here, she, that is not a certain amount by any means. That's just an estimate, and I do three of those probably. Hopefully, that would be a worst case. One other thing I would like to comment on is this, you know, we had this COVID funds that you and I were talking about earlier today, and we've already allocated those funds. And, you know, if we're going to do this on our own, if we're going to build our own fire department, a big chunk of those funds may be needed for that. And right now, we've only allocated $500,000, I believe, what you were telling me.
Well, let's just define allocated. We have not, we have not spent any of those dollars yet. We had a meeting with our American Rescue Plan advisor with Trailer and Associates. We've met with him several times. We last met on Thursday, and we basically did some earmarking of funds as to how we would like to spend that $6.3 million that we've been fortunate to get from the ARP Act. And in that meeting, we all agreed that, you know, these numbers can change. You know, we don't know where this fire contract's going to go, and we may find ourselves having to allocate more to fire protection than the $500,000 that we put into that exercise that we went through on Thursday. But, right, in your and my conversation earlier today, I think $500,000 would be a drop in the bucket to begin a new fire department. And in fact, I put some handouts over there on the table that went through some of those items, and they stack up quickly, especially when you're talking about providing a fire station for your county fire department. You know, if you're talking about in this scenario, and this is provided by Chief McCray, who I asked to give me some reasonable numbers here as to what it would cost in the way of startup expenses for a new fire department. And the big ticket on here is that fire department. And the big ticket on here is that fire department. And in this projection of a nine, 9,300 square foot fire station at about $400 a square foot, you're looking at 3.7 million. That's before you put anything inside of it.
One thing I'd like to comment, I had a meeting with Mr. Commissioner Parksman as well, and he's, he's made some trips out to Hopkins County. And the Fire Chief for Hopkins County had mentioned, and I don't know, can't really speak much to this, but there may be some grants that can help subsidize these costs, which would be greatly beneficial, but that's going to be, we need to be looking into as well. But that may offset the need to have to utilize as long as 6 million. I also want to say, I've had probably at least half a dozen meetings with the county, County Judge-elect Cooper. He's been really involved, and I really want to appreciate, just, just say, I personally appreciate Kent Cooper doing that because he's not getting paid due to this. He's really, I think, gone above and beyond for somebody who's not even in office yet. And I know he's met with the Fire Chief in Hopkins County, and he's, he's, he's represented to me, I think I can say this, that if, if the county does need to go this route, then he's willing and able to do what it takes to make it happen. And he believes, he doesn't want to have to do it in a year, but if that's what has to be done, he's willing to, he's willing to do it. So I do appreciate that. But that's all I have this time.
All right. So back on what do we do with the vote that we made on the 21st? How do we basically back that up and start over or, or approve it or rescind it? What do we need to do?
I made a, I put this together during my lunch break, just a proposed move, I'll just read it. I move that the county rescind, this does not mean this would be one of the Commissioners, obviously, but the statement being, I move that the county rescind the motion of September 24, 21, which supported the basic financial proponents of the contract, but require review by the county attorney and outside counsel. I further move that the county enter into a one-year fire protection contract with the city of Mount Pleasant, as they had previously offered with terms to be determined. I further move that the county begin the process of forming a new county fire department and simultaneously be willing to negotiate in good faith, a long-term fire protection contract with the city. So that would give us the ability, considering we'll have two new members of the court in just a few, you know, just a couple, two, three months from now, the ability to hopefully negotiate, continue to negotiate this, when both parties can kind of see the cost that this is going to affect everyone, when we start doing some due diligence. Because I personally, personally, you know, my personal opinion is, I would hope that we can reach some agreement with the county, with the city to, because of the efficiencies of, of one fire department creates instead of creating two. But at the same time, we can't enter into a contract that jeopardizes our fiscal position the way this could do. That's basically my thoughts.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sure we've got some folks in the audience that will have comments, but before I do that, I've had my shot. I think I'll start with precinct one and just work down the row, and anybody that has some opening comments or wants to state publicly what your position is at this point, I think that will help guide the conversation. So Commissioner Parksman, any opening comments?
I think whatever John Colburn had said.
Will you pull that mic up just a wee bit?
I think what John Colburn has said pretty much sums it up, what I was thinking. I know a lot of people know the way I feel. I'm not comfortable with this contract, especially with no caps on it, no way, no way out. And, and I stand behind our county attorney and our county auditor with their decisions they've made, and so that's the way I feel about it. So I'm not comfortable with it.
Okay. I like what John Colburn had to say. I'll leave it at that.
You know, we have a, right now, the fire department in Mount Pleasant are Cadillac, bunch of guys, and, you know, we can, we afford a Cadillac, you know, but, you know, we may have to go back to a Dodge or something. But, you know, it's, it's just what, it's about the money, taxpayers' money, what is really important here. And lives are too, don't get me wrong, but we need both, you know. We just got to figure out some way that we can do it. And I agree with John Mark and his comments and Barbara's.
I don't like the open-end contract at all, but I do not see us starting a fire department in a year's time. I, I just don't see it happening. I've, I've been involved in fire business since I was 18 years old, and I, I kind of know what the ins and outs are. I, I don't want to spend the taxpayers' money, but I also want to protect our, our taxpayers. And that's, that's where we've got to, what we've got to look at right now is protecting our, our folks out there. And so that's something that, whichever way this goes, I will be right in the middle of it. I'll help in any, any way, any shape, any form that I can. But my, with a good conscience, I just cannot, I, I really can't go for either, either way right now.
For those of you that, that support beginning a county fire department, I'd like to hear your comments on how you think that will save money, both in the five-year period that we're talking about, as well as on beyond that, because we know that we're not going to completely eliminate from our budget the cost of fire protection. There's going to be a cost one way or another, whether we're contracting with the city or whether we're paying for and maintaining and operating a fire department. So where are the cost savings if we take that step in faith and form our own fire department and say, we do not need the city any longer?
Well, will we pay the city right now? We can fund at least 14 full-time firefighters with what we pay right now, the $1 million. So based off of Hopkins County budget, they pay 1.1, they fund nine full-time firefighters, and they have 15 part-time firefighters, and I'm thinking we could pretty much run ours at least 1.3 million dollars a year and have a pretty comfortable fire department and a lot of manpower to do that.
And how quickly can we run it for that chief?
I think for a long time. I mean, I, I think we'd be real comfortable with it.
But, but obviously, and I think you would agree, there's going to be a significant amount of startup expenses.
Well, sure there will.
Where will that money come from?
Well, like I say, like John had mentioned a while ago, we have COVID money, which is about 6.1 million dollars sitting there. We haven't spent any of that. That would come in handy right now. We, there's three grants I know we could, we could go through, the SAVIER grant, an ELC grant, and a USDA grant. And a lot of those grants would pay for a big portion or not all of our fire equipment and trucks and the station as well.
How likely is it we would get any or all of those grants?
Well, just being on, you know, if we were going on our own right now, they, they say we'd be in front of most everybody else that's sorry you put in for them, so we'd be like number one on the list.
So is that a very strong likelihood?
Yes.
And what are those, what are the amounts of those grants?
Well, I, I don't really know. It's whatever, you know, we have to get a grant manager on that to chase all these down, but I don't know.
What's the potential?
Sir?
What's the potential amount of the grants?
Do you remember all that data?
He said that, you know, most, on your building and stuff, you know, they would, the USDA grant, it would pay 90% of your building on your fire department. And he said, since y'all were starting up new, that y'all, you know, you'd kind of jump over folks and say, you know, we got, you know, you need to start it, so. And in the other grants, you know, it's like any typical grants, I guess, it's, you pay 10% of it, but, you know, with the fire trucks and, and all the help, and all the gear and stuff.
And Commissioner, this is based on the Hopkins County Fire Chief's statements?
Yes, sir.
My understanding.
Well, we talked about the AARP, American Rescue Plan funds. You know, on Thursday, we talked about $500,000. Hopefully, you've looked over this startup cost list. I, I see, I see spending just about everything there to open this fire department as I look at these costs. A fire station, furnishings for the fire station, an air compressor to fill up the tanks, protective gear for all the firefighters at about 5,000 a set, uniforms there in the station, fire engine, vehicle extrication tools, a backup fire engine, a couple of brush trucks, a fire truck for the chief, radio repeater, building a tower if we can't rent space on one of the existing towers, reprogramming all of our radios, and then who knows, we may even have to buy the land to put this thing on. Are you willing to give up all of your AARP money in order to get this started? You're willing to give it all up? Commissioner Applewhite, what do you think about all these startup costs?
Well, it's, you know, any kind of business startup, you're going to have to, it costs money to do that. And, you know, if we can't get a, a good contract, you know, this is, we're going to have to do it.
Okay. Any other comments before I open the floor? All right. I'm going to open up the floor to anyone that would like to come up to the mic and share your thoughts. Let's try to keep it around two minutes. How about that?
Two, I don't know if I can keep it to two, but.
Oh, I can make you. If you're really good, we'll give you some more time. How about that? I, I just want to avoid a lot of, a lot of repetition. So I'll, I'll be laying it.
Okay. So I'm trying to understand the justification for the exponential increase in the department's budget. The contract, my understanding, asks not only for an increase in the fire department's budget, but demands that the rural county residents agree to unlimited cap to expenses on top of already paying would be 40% of the fire department's budget. The increase in expenses would necessitate that the county increase taxes on the residents of Titus County by 3.5% every year for the next five years. Please note that the fire department's budget has increased by 56% from 2015 to 2023, with the 2015 budget being 2.1 million and the proposed budget being 3.7 million, just over. And in order to understand the need for such drastic increase in the budget, I looked at the data. According to the U.S. Census figures, in 2010, Titus County had an estimated population of 32,334 residents. And 2020 census data shows that the population declined to 31,247 residents. And 2021 census data shows that the estimated population in Titus County is 31,183 residents, which means that the population has declined from 2010 to 2021 by 1,151 residents. So it's inaccurate that this county is growing by population. From this data, I cannot see the justification for the exponential increase in the cost of services for a net decline in population. I also looked at the Texas Fire Reporting System for the years between 2019 and 2021. The data bore out, I was looking to see if the data bore out any demand for monies or equipment. For this purpose, I'm focusing on fire calls. In 2019, there were 76 fire calls, 21 buildings, 15 vehicles, 40 other. In 2020, there were 81 fire calls, 29 buildings, 16 vehicles, 36 other. In 2021, there were 97 fire calls, 22 buildings, 31 vehicles, 44 other. You'll see the greatest demand was for fire calls, which I can only assume may be brush fires since the area we live in, and that the largest difference between 2019 and 2021 is that the vehicle fires doubled from 15 to 16 to 31. Some members of this body have claimed that people should be willing to pay higher taxes so people won't die in fires. That is an insincere argument. If you want the data on the, on the fire-related injury, according to Texas Fire Reporting System, it showed that in 2021, there was one fire-related injury and one fire-related death. In 2020, there was one fire-related injury, one non-fire-related injury, and one fire-related death. In 2019, there were zero injuries and zero deaths. As an elected official, you should be competent enough to put forward a cogent and informed presentation as to why your policy proposals are the, would best serve the community. Some members of this body have failed that basic task, expected, sorry, expected of servant leadership, and instead have used emotional blackmail to, as a primary argument. And I don't appreciate that. The fire department responded to other calls as well that required emergency medical treatment, which were the majority of calls. They also include service calls, good-intent calls, hazardous condition calls. But again, the data does not show the need for such a large increase in the budget and does not give justice to purchasing very expensive equipment. This is not that I don't want to support our firefighters having excellent equipment that best serves them and the community, but rather that we must be responsible in purchasing equipment that meets the needs of the community that we actually live in, rather than the reality that we wish existed. I have no complaints with city residents purchasing equipment that they believe best serves their interests because they're the primary stakeholders in the health and well-being of their immediate community. But the interests of rural residents requires different equipment and leadership that puts our county, sorry, our, that puts our needs first. Rural residents such as myself, I live in Cookeville. We should not be obligated to purchase equipment that is not designed, that is designed for city populace and would prove inefficient and inaccessible to our communities. And I can tell you from experience that a lot of that large equipment is inaccessible to our communities. I still have a lot more questions, and you actually mentioned something that I was looking at data on. You have insider knowledge on like maybe where some of these fires are happening and if they're cross, they're crossing boundaries, but that, that is not public knowledge, and I searched very sincerely for that. And I wish we had that because it'd allow us residents to understand the argument that the fire department or fire chief is making, and that they won't make that public. And I wish it was. Because then now, if we have that, you know, like where the fires are happening, what's a vehicle, what kind of building, what was the cause, how large was the brush fire, what was, what was the cause of that brush fire? That you can, by answering these questions, you can establish what and where is the greatest need in the county, the services rendered, and how the county volunteer fire departments can easily fill gaps or be the primary response team when the city, with the city backing up their services. Our volunteer fire departments perform valuable services to our rural community, and we are incredibly grateful for the men serving. According to FEMA, 69.9% of fire departments across the state of Texas are 100% volunteer. An additional 11.7% of fire departments in Texas are mostly volunteer. At the national level, 70.2% of fire departments are 100% volunteer and 15.7% are mostly volunteer. Perhaps some of the, you want the city to have another full-fledged fire station, but nationally, 68.68% of areas only have one full-fledged fire station, and you mentioned that we already have two. These facts bear out that a professional fighting force does not equal compensation, but rather upstanding citizens trained, dreading, willing to voluntarily serve and die for their communities. In my opinion, this contract shows a lack of respect for these volunteer firefighters, the fire departments that they serve in, and the communities who rely and sincerely appreciate these, their services. These fire, volunteer fire departments and firefighters are integral to our communities, and their response times are swift for the fires that I have witnessed and respond to. This is not a slight to city firefighters, but really, it's a reality of location. I quickly want to refer back to the 3.5% annual tax increase that this contract would necessitate. If you look at the 2023 proposed budget, you'll see that Titus County Appraisal District assessed all properties across the county, increasing in value by 17.6%. It's, it's a slightly ironic that the property tax increase over the five-year period would be 17.5%, 0.11% less than the valued, the higher value appraisal for 2022. In addition, even if you raise our property taxes by this mandated 17.5% over the course of five years to fund this contract, the general fund would still be net negative. This means that the county would need to downsize and begin layoffs across the border or you'd be forced to raise taxes in another capacity. I would like to point out that we live in a rural county where the per capita income in Texas, in Titus County in 2020, according to census figures, was $22,077. In addition, as of 2022, the Tax Foundation is, the Tax Foundation has rated Texas as the sixth most burdensome, the sixth most burdensome state for personal property taxes and the 14th most burdensome state for business property taxes. Members of this body receive compensations, Commissioners, that is more than double the per capita income of residents of this county, and yet some of you so easily subject us to a greater tax burden that will only ever increase. It is a disingenuous argument to say my property taxes have not increased since you previously did not raise them. My property has increased in value every year I have lived here, which means every year you get more of my money. And I, in Cookeville, am forced to pay property taxes in two counties due to its boundary lines for schools. What if What if Morris County treated me so flippantly as some of you on this board, on this commission have when it comes to taxes in my home? Elected officials should take pause before raising property taxes in such a way that will force people out of their homes. Some of you may stand in front of someone's homestead and see the last little bit of wealth that you can extract from them before they go bankrupt or are forced to sell their home and their land. But when we standard our archway in our homestead that bears our surname, we see our heritage, and we're going to fight to keep it. Lastly, I do not support acquiescing our rural community's sovereignty to the city, which is what this contract would entail and would require. I believe in the separation of powers, and if we were to stay in this current contract, I'd support a disinterested third party having emergency response oversight that would coordinate the city fire department with our volunteer fire departments. I would honestly prefer that the rural residents of this county have our own fire department that works in full faith effort with the city, all the volunteer fire departments in the county, and the neighboring counties to best serve our rural communities, which have different needs, and quite frankly, would allow me to provide oversight over the budget and over the fire chief, because right now I don't have that. He's appointed by the city council, and I don't have a vote on that council. I have a vote on here, and if you relinquish your authority over the budget to the city council, what am I voting for? I'm looking at this from a needs-based and fact-based orientation. I want this county to succeed. This is my home, and I love being a member of this community. The greatest compliment that can pay any of you residents, all of you residents, is that when Sylvie, my partner, and I, we purchased our very first home in 2018, after moving around for years in the military, and we chose to live here. For these reasons, I urge you to vote no on this contract, because this contract does not serve the interests of this county. Instead, this contract will bankrupt the county and bankrupt its residents. Thank you.
You put a lot of thought into that. Thank you. Be tough to top that. Mr. Rice, come on up.
Welcome, Bobby.
Hello, I'm Bobby Rice, Superintendent Schools of Horse Bluff ISD. I'm not here to take a position on the contract, but I would like to say I'm responsible for 800 students and about 325 staff members. And if you choose to go with the county fire department, I believe it is my responsibility to ask you to consider some kind of process during that transition so that we can ensure we have fire protection at our school during that transition.
Most definitely.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Good afternoon, Judge Lee and Commissioners. My name is Jennifer Harland. I'm the External Affairs Manager for SWEPCO. Today, I'm speaking to you on behalf of SWEPCO and the Welsh Power Plant. Joining me today is Welsh Plant Manager, Mr. Donnie Duffy. Last week, we were made aware of the situation with the city and the county with respect to the fire services protection. SWEPCO and the City of Mount Pleasant Fire Department have a long history of supporting each other with regard to first responders and emergency response efforts to the city and also with our partnership with the Welsh Power Plant. At the Welsh Plant, we can respond only to incipient fires, as we disbanded our Fire Brigade and Hazardous Materials Response Team many years ago. We could not keep up with the training requirements and the equipment needs for onsite response efforts. Therefore, the relationship with the City of Mount Pleasant Fire Department began. For many years, we've partnered with the city, and it's reflected in our emergency response plans that are required to be submitted to the TCEQ and the EPA. We cannot incur a lapse in fire protection for the same reason that the superintendent just spoke. We respect and honor both the county and city efforts to come to a resolution that is in the best interest of all of the residents and businesses of Titus County. I would personally like to tell Chief McCray thank you for your support and the relationship. Our employees are always very complimentary of the service when we do drills and so forth with them. So with that, I thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Ladies, gentlemen, anyone? All right. Thank you for your comments, all three of you. Commissioners, what's your pleasure here?
Well, I move that the county rescind the motion of September 21st, which supported the basic financial components of the contract, but required review by a county attorney and outside counsel. I furthermore moved that the county enter a one-year contract, protection contract with the City of Mount Pleasant, as they have previously offered, with terms to be determined. I further move that the county begin the process of forming a new fire department and simultaneously be willing to negotiate in good faith a long-term fire protection contract with the city.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Parchman.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Applewhite. That's pretty well the suggestion that you had made. I have a motion and a second. I have time for discussion. Well, once again, I'll, you just heard from two of the biggest entities that rely on the services of the City of Mount Pleasant. Of course, they rely on the services of their local volunteers, but they especially rely on the size of the staff, the expansive array of equipment, and the extensive years of experience. And I'm sure there's lots of others that we are not thinking about as we consider going in a direction of forming our own fire department and hoping that we can do it cheaper than the city will do it for us. I must say, I'm extremely concerned about the startup cost and the fact that we would be willing to spend a good deal of that $6 million of American Rescue Plan funds in order to do that. Then again, maybe this is time, maybe this is the time for us to put some serious study into forming that department. So as I understood your motion, you would, you're voting to begin the process to form the county fire department, but during that one-year period, which is an extension of the time that you're asking from the city, you would do two things. You would pursue the formation of a county fire department, but I heard you say that you would also be open to continuing discussions, should there be any offered.
Yes.
And what would you hope to achieve if the city did say, "Yeah, let's sit back down at the negotiating table"? What would be your objectives? Because I know you've got at least one council member here. What message would you give to them?
Well, for one, I mean, it had to be a cap on it, for one. I'm not open to giving an open checkbook out to anybody. And it'd have to have at least a 12-month out on it as well. And it'd have to be a lower figure as well. I don't think 40% is something we can afford right now. I think I would be maybe around 35, 36%. I think that'd be probably doable.
So if they were to really sharpen their pencil and got that annual cost down significantly, whatever significantly is, you would still say it, but I still want a one-year out. I always want to be able to throw down a nuclear option and blow this contract apart if I feel like in the middle of it, I can't afford it any longer. All right, I have a motion and a second. All right, I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor of the motion, and would you read it one more time slowly so we can absorb all that?
Okay. I move that the county rescind the motion of September 21st, which supported the basic financial components of the contract, but required review by county attorney and outside counsel. I further move that the county enter into a one-year fire protection contract with the City of Mount Pleasant, as they have previously offered, with terms to be determined. I further move that the county begin the process of forming a new county fire department and simultaneously be willing to negotiate in good faith a long-term fire protection contract with the city.
All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's, I have an aye, I have an aye, I have an aye.
I want to read something here before I cast my vote.
Okay.
I have thought and prayed and thought and prayed long and hard over the past several weeks over this matter. Truth is, it should never have come to this standoff, and I will take my blame, along with other members of this court, as well as the city council, for not bringing it up for negotiations sooner. We all knew the old contract was expiring at the end of September. However, I cannot, with clear conscience, vote for an open-ended contract. It is just not good business, plain and simple. On the other hand, I don't feel comfortable voting for, to build a county fire department at this point in time. Although I'm not opposed to it, I don't want to rush into such a major undertaking as this without proper planning. There are a lot of factors, including wrong motives, which have no place in such an important decision. Two wrongs don't make a right, make one right. For these reasons, I'm abstaining.
All right, well, I have a majority of the court that has cast a positive vote. I was certainly hoping that I wouldn't be the final deciding vote. It is an awkward position to be in, to be two and a half months away from retiring from this court, and to either way obligate a new incoming judge with whom I have the most respect for and a new incoming commissioner, which is yet to be determined. So I was going to really struggle if I was asked to cast a deciding vote there and potentially tie them up with a five-year contract and them not feel comfortable with that. So I don't have to cast that vote today. So we do have three votes. I'm going to abstain from that vote, as has Commissioner Parker, but nonetheless, we have three ayes, and that does cause this motion to pass. So, gentlemen at this table, and incoming-elect Judge Cooper, I think y'all have got, y'all got your work cut out for you. And this motion clearly states that this commission will keep an open mind should opportunity for continued discussions with the city come up that might prove to be valuable. So I'm glad that you're not closing the door on that completely. The city may see it otherwise, but I'm going to continue to trust in the positive working relationship of our city and county. I certainly hope that that continues. I hope that this does not set that back in any way, shape, or form. So thank you for all the many calls, texts, emails that have contributed to this Commissioner's court's ability to make these decisions. It doesn't come easy for this group, and we'll certainly hope that we can provide good fire protection at an affordable cost in whatever relationship with the city that that looks like. If there is nothing else today, gentlemen, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Motion to adjourn, Commissioner Fitch, Second Commissioner Parchman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.